To begin, I will call your attention to the Open Meetings Act hosted here in the council chambers. And would you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change, the removal of item number 13.
I'll make the motion with the change notated.
Second.
Okay, motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Now look for a motion to approve the full agenda with one change, the removal of item number 21.
I would make that motion, Your Honor, with the removal of item 21.
Second.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Moves us to item number 18 on the council agenda for special presentations. Proclamation for April 2019 as Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 11, 2019 marks the 51st anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates the national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And the Norfolk Housing Agency and the Norfolk Housing Development Division of the City of Norfolk are committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Law, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Fair Housing Month. I don't know that there's anyone here to receive the proclamation, and I believe so. Moves us to public hearings. Item number 19, I will open this public hearing to consider an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund grant in the amount of $500,000 for Conover Properties to convert an existing vacant building, formerly the Grand Theater, at 120 South 3rd Street into nine rental housing units. And to begin that hearing, Jan?
Jan Merrill with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
Ben Conover with Conover Properties.
So, the city of Norfolk, as the applicant, is requesting $500,000 to be used to convert the existing vacant building into nine rental units, which is located at 120 South 3rd Street. It's the former Grand Theater. $459,000 will be used for construction costs, $28,500 will be used for housing management and lead clearance, and $12,500 will be used for general admin. In the public notice, it said that eight of the nine rentals will be used, only available to income qualifying. It's actually five. That was after the calculations. It's actually, it needs to be five of them instead of eight. Conover Properties is going to provide $100,000 in matching funds and $508,500 in leverage funds. The affordable period is 10 years, and no persons will be displaced because of this project.
Thank you, Jan.
Again, my name is Ben Conover with Conover Properties. We've been given an enormous opportunity in renovating the Grand Theater, which is one of the most historic buildings in Norfolk, and had the opportunity to work with the Norfolk Community Theater Group and kind of share with them our vision, and very excited about the project. Our hope is, and it needs a significant amount of structural work, which is where the grant will come into play, you know, it needs, the roof needs to be completely redone per the structural assessment that was completed. The top area where they had all the props on the back of the building needs to completely come off, you know, part of the north building needs to be demolished and put back in the parking lot. The grant will help with some of that. But our vision is to have nine beautiful, modern, affordable apartments in the top floor, which will leave 13 to 15-foot floors in the bottom that we can have a completely open area where we could possibly attract some kind of a venue, maybe a brewery, a high-end eating establishment, or something that will benefit Norfolk. So, the first phase, again, will be the apartment phase, going in and basically making it to where we can build the apartments, leaving the bottom completely open, and hopefully attracting somebody, somebody else that can use the first floor and make it viable for future generations.
Ben, what's your timeline for this project?
We're working on a building in Madison right now, which is 12 apartments, and we're hoping to be done with that by around Halloween time. We started the architect plans for the theater building, which will probably take three months. We have kind of a preliminary outline. We're hoping to start sometime in December.
Okay.
And it'll probably be a 12 to 15-month build-out for the initial phase, is what we're planning.
There won't be release of funds before that, so it's right on schedule for his, for the phase.
So if all goes well, the occupancy in December of '20?
That would be hopeful. Yeah, it'd be probably December of, yeah, '20.
'20.
Or January, February '21, depending on if we go over.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Ben, you've taken on a couple of these projects in the area. You mentioned Madison, you've done some of this in some other communities, taking historic buildings downtown and converting them. Can you talk about the process with those experiences?
Sure. Yeah, the first three buildings we did were smaller buildings. They were three apartments upstairs and storefronts, generally 3,000, 3,500 square foot of floor. The building we're doing in Madison is almost 12,000 square feet, so it's, you know, bigger than the Grand Theater. It's a very large building, you know, and I think in going through the process in Madison, we're roughly 70% completed. We actually acquired the building the end of '16. But the planning process, the architects, the engineers, all of the things that go into it, the asbestos remediation, our contractors lead-certified, you know, there's just a whole lot of boxes that you have to check to make a project like that viable. And so I think with the team that we've put together, we're able to take a project like that and bring it to fruition. But it is, you know, it's about a year of planning, so it's, you know, our goal right now is we started working on the building in Madison, and I've been basically full-time planning that project, the depot, there's one other building we're planning. So it's, you know, my goal is to get that completely finished so that when we're finished in Madison, the guys can pull up and we have all of our ducks in a row. So it's, you always have, you know, you have your budget, and then you have your budget, you know, you have the structural engineer and the other, you know, and it continues to add. So it's, you know, we have kind of our preliminary budget, and we estimate it high based on what we've expected. Once we finish our architect plans and have the structural plans, you know, we'll go back and fine-tune those numbers, but it should be close.
Other questions?
Mr. Conover, you mentioned the depot in your statement. Is that going to be a simultaneous project along with the theater building, or is one going to have to go on the back burner?
Yeah, most likely what's going to happen, depending on what lays out, there's probably three or four different variables to the projects we're working on, is most likely the theater building will take precedent, and the depot will be sometime after that. So that one will probably get put on the back burner just because we have a definite number of individuals that are capable of doing it.
All right, thank you.
These conversion projects are oftentimes a long journey, but it certainly has to help to have some experience, have a crew that you've put together that has the know-how in doing this. And, you know, we appreciate someone like you coming forth from the private sector to repurpose a historic building like this in our downtown, because I think we can all agree it probably didn't have much life left. It had set empty for a long time, and it was, the conditions were only worsening. So, it's, yeah, I think you came in at the right time, and the idea to accommodate more downtown housing is one that's of high interest right now, so we wish you the best of luck. And the partnerships involved in some of these grant processes to help make downtown housing conversion projects a little bit more realistic, I think it's a good and prudent use of resources.
I appreciate that. We're excited about it.
Any other questions? Ben or Jan on this? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make a comment can do so now. Seeing no one, we'll move to close the hearing and move to item number 20, looking for a motion to consider Resolution Number 2019-22 approving a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund award in the amount of $500,000, which will be used by Conover Properties to convert an existing vacant building into nine rental housing units, which will be located at 120 South 3rd Street.
Your Honor, I'd move for consideration of Resolution Number 2019-22.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2019-22 is adopted.
Moves us to item number 22 on our regular agenda. Look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with Olson Incorporated for a facility master plan and related projects at the water pollution control plant for an amount of $284,400.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second. And Mr. Bowling, good evening.
Good evening, Todd Bowling, wastewater superintendent. I'm going to give you a little background on it. Put my projector up here for site overview, just to give you a little reacquainting of our plant down on Monroe Avenue. Normally, we flow through two, we have two trains at the wastewater plant. The current train that we're currently using is called our sequencing batch reactor plant, and that's the big square here that you see in the foreground there. The other part is called the activated sludge train, and it's basically comprised of four tanks here that are, were taken offline back when Beef America Tyson or IPP, whatever you want to call them, went away in 1998, and we took them offline at that point in time, thinking we can get by with current operations. If we continue to operate them from then until now, they do not meet the current permit limits that we have in place for the current permit. So, they're kind of just empty for the most part, and we're running effluent through them in the wintertime just to keep them from freezing at this point in time, but they take a great amount of money if we were to restart them again at that point. So just to give you a little background on that, going through the, walking through the process a little bit, normally we do a facility plan that comprises of a 20-year plan going forward, tells us what we're going to do with our plant to meet limits and capacity and for the citizens and the flow and the treatment process that we have. We did one back in 1980s, in the 1990s, which comprised of this sequencing batch reactor that was built in 1994 to '96 project time. We used, back in them days, Kirkman Michael, those engineering firms at that time. Clint Weber retired in the early '90s, so we kind of switched over to Olson Engineering at this time, and they've done a great job for us with all, some projects like the SPR blower projects and some other ancillaries that we've done, working with them on holding tank coating projects and things like that. The reasons that we want to do this is, basically, we want to have a plan in place, and we don't have one at this point. So, one of the reasons is, is we're extending the water and sewer lines outwards from our service area, so like the Nucor, south of town, and others. So we want to encompass and make sure we're ready for them if they come online, as well as the prospective industry that we may have come into town. For example, if they give us a million gallons a day, that impacts this sequencing batch reactor by a million gallons. Give you an analogy, we're running about 3.5 million gallons through the plant at this point in time, and that would add another million gallons, which would make it 4.5, which, in 1994, the sequencing batch reactor was designed for 5.7 million, so we're reaching that capacity at this point. And when we take, every year in about April, May, we take off one of these tanks, one of the four tanks that you see in the foreground, to do routine maintenance such as the SPR diffuser replacements, mixer overhaul, and things like that. So when we do that, we reduce that capacity, or the firm capacity is what we would call it. So we don't, we hinder ourselves, and we're trying to hurry through the process of maintenance and operations, trying to get it done and completed to stay within permit limits, and also to, in case there was a flood or something that would inundate us or something that we just recently had. So we're trying to encompass that a little bit as well. We're flowing at that capacity about 60% of our design. DEQ and EPA requires, when you reach 80% of design, that you pull and actually do a physical facility master plan, is what this is going to entail. So, on that part, that kind of explains why in the rationales we need to have that plan in place and what we're doing. In January, we started our new effluent permit limits, which is last five years. It has more stringent ammonia limits on it that we have to meet, and they just now proposed, and they're going to roll it out, and, and it's no April fools, by the way. In April, they're going to roll out the new Title 117 surface water rules, which makes more stringent ammonia limits for the permits that are being renewed from here on. So I know the next five years, when our permit comes up, we'll have more stringent ammonia limits for that, and then as well as we will more likely have total phosphorus and total nitrogen limits that we have to adhere to, which we're not even addressing that in the current operations that we're doing at this point in time. Realize that this wasn't budgeted, but kind of with the flood and some other reactions that we had, we flowed 8 million gallons through the plant, and we had to do that manually through the 5.7 design. So we didn't have an automatic feature for that, so that would help in this future designs for the capacity of that type of nature. Kind of looking back, and I'll explain, in your packet you have the contract and the scope services, and I'll explain each of the four scope phases, if you will, in brief. So basically, Phase 100 is looking at the current capacity and what we can do to increase that and improve on a firm capacity, such as when we take a basin out of service to do that, how can we do and make, keep that in service to make the plant meet permit limits and continue on as is? What can we do in that fashion, just looking at the current status? Phase 200 is looking at a short window of opportunity for water reuse. There's two components to that. The water reuse is looking at how we can use our treated effluent internally with all the processes that we have, such as belt press de-watering, grit de-watering, and things like that, that we use raw water from the water department to do some flushing of that nature and use, reuse our effluent to do that. Plus, to enhance, the second component is to enhance maybe industrial properties out to, say, the industrial park by the ethanol plant if we put a line out to that point. This doesn't design that line, it tells us how can we react and do something to that nature. So we can put our effluent out to industrial tract where maybe they can reuse something instead of buying clean, clean water from the water department from, so you'd have two separate lines maybe feeding that industrial tract in that fashion. The Phase 3 is an evaluation of our equipment and structures. Every year I do a life cycle cost, have a spreadsheet, do a capital improvement plan that we present to you yearly, and it'll slide it that maybe I'm missing some things when I do that internally. So another set of eyes is what I'm looking at here, is they can come in and they do a total evaluation of anything that's $20,000 asset or greater, and look at that and give us a feedback and a timeline of what we need to replace on equipment or structures, enhancements of that. The largest dollars for this is Phase 400, and this is actually the 20-year facility master plan to meet what I previously said for future limits. Will we be able to use the existing tankage or not? Or do we need to build a new structure beside or around the plant with the new treatment technology to meet the new limits and things like that? We're not sure of what's going to happen with this, but they'll be able to present us up to three items, three conceptual designs for us to pick from, is what that's going through. And what this entails is take all the data that they're going to request and plug it into a model, a computer model, and be able to tell us, okay, this type of plant is able to meet these limits that you need to do for now and to the future, along with citizens' growth and flow and extra industry that you may have in that area. So that's for our 20-year plan going forward. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions if I didn't fully explain it to you.
Okay. Todd, any questions? I think that means you did a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Any general discussion, council comments, questions on the process? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Item 23, entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5606 creating water extension district number 123 of South Victory Road, providing for construction of a ductile iron water main together with necessary appurtenances located in part of the northwest quarter and southwest quarter of Section 25, and the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of Section 26, all in township 24 North, range 1 West at the 6 p.m., Madison County, Nebraska. As a note, ordinance number 5606 passed on first reading at the March 18 city council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5606 on second read.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second. Steve, want to give us a brief refresher on this?
Mayor Council, this is the extension of water from just south of the Amberwood apartment area there on Highway 35, extends water down to the properties along Victory Road all the way down to Highway 275 so that we would be able to serve those for future development. It also allows us to serve the properties along that corridor that are already in city limits and a small triangle of properties that sit just outside city limits.
Okay. Steve, any questions for the discussion? Hearing none, short title, please back.
An ordinance creating water extension district number 123 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outdoor boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, to provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance 5606 on second reading, council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, File, voting against the ordinance on second reading, council member Weeble House, ordinance 5606 carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass this on third reading, as third reading doesn't allow for discussion anyway.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second to suspend the rules and passed on third reading. If no discussion on that, please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance on third reading, council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, File, voting against the ordinance, council member Weeble House, ordinance 5606 carries on third reading.
Okay. Item number 24, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5607 creating sanitary sewer extension district number 252 of South Victory Road, providing for construction of a sanitary sewer pipeline along with all other appurtenances located in part of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of Section 25, and the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of Section 26, all in township 24 North, range 1 West at the 6 p.m., Madison County, Nebraska. Ordinance number 5607 also passed on first reading at the March 18 city council meeting.
Your Honor, I move consideration for ordinance 5607 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Steve, anything to add on this before we further consider?
This would just be the sanitary sewer portion of the same utility extensions.
Okay. Any discussion in council, any questions, comments? Hearing none, short title, please back.
An ordinance creating sanitary sewer extension district number 1252 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance 5607 on second reading, council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, File, voting against the ordinance on second reading, council member Weeble House, ordinance 5607 carries on second reading.
Given your honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5607 on the third reading, as third reading doesn't have discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance 5607 on third reading, council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, File, voting against the ordinance, council member Weeble House, ordinance 5607 carries on third reading.
Item 25, look for motion to consider approval of an interlocal agreement between the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District and the city of Norfolk for the purpose of a river channel restoration on the north fork of the Elkhorn River.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second. And Steve, could you provide us some background on this, please?
Mayor, council members, about a year ago, city entered into some agreements with JEO and Riverwise Construction to do an analysis and study of a restoration project of the Norfolk River from approximately Elm down to just south of Norfolk Avenue. As a function of that study and that report from the consultants, the project cost was estimated at $3,95,103.60. After receiving this study, we engaged in conversations about partnerships with local entities to help cover the cost of that project. We approached the LENRD, or the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District, last July and asked if they would partner with us on that to the tune of $1,31,701.20, that value representing a one-third split between potentially city, the LENRD, and other fundraising efforts. They passed that at their, I believe it was their July meeting of 2018. Subsequent to that, we prepared this agreement that is before you. They have reviewed that. We spent a couple of months reviewing it and preparing it. I believe it went to their November meeting where they approved it. Subsequent to that, there's been some other discussion about whether or not there was any amendments or additions or changes needed to the agreement. We determined that there is not, and so therefore, we're putting it to city council for ratification by the city.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. So this essentially cements into place the partnership that we So this essentially cements into place the partnership that we've created with the local NRD in planning for recreation and safety improvements to the Norfolk in our downtown area. Any, any questions, comments, discussion on this, council? Okay. Hearing none, would ask for your vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 26, I would look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with Minelli Wagner and Associates Incorporated for the East Benjamin Avenue Connector Trail, RTP 2018-003 project for a design fee of $20,000 lump sum fee plus NEPA documentation not to exceed $10,000.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion second. And Steve, background on this as well, please.
Mayor, council members, this would be the engineering contract to design the trail extension on Benjamin Avenue from Victory Road east to Highway 35. It would connect into the east, to the existing trail on the east side of Highway 35. It would also connect down Victory Road to, I think it's Sycamore, where the more recent trail project started. So it would kind of connect that whole northeast, that whole northeast corner, creating a loop in effect, down Highway 35 to Norfolk, Norfolk up Victory Road, back to Benjamin. The county is in the process of preparing plans for the reconstruction of Benjamin Avenue in that area. We would follow up their project with the trail project. The grading for the project would be conducted as a function of the county project, and our project would be coming behind that to do the paving and subsequent permanent erosion control, reseeding, and so forth. Minelli Wagner's presented a fee to us of $20,000 to do that design. In addition to the actual design, there was a upwards of $10,000 for preparation of the NEPA document that's required as a function of our grant. Total project estimates right around $700,000, $300,000 in partnership with Northeast Community College, $250,000 from the Trails Grant, and then the remainder by the city.
And that Trails Grant is a recreational Trails Grant through the state of Nebraska, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions for Steve on this?
Steve, exactly what is the, the NEPA documentation?
It's an environmental documentation. It's just looking at any environmental needs in that corridor that we would need to be conscious of as a function of design, not to disturb. So it's, it gets into your, your nesting birds, and you know, there's a whole study associated with, I mean, what do I want to say, anthropological studies, looking at potential burial sites, that type of stuff that might exist in the corridor, so.
Right, thank you.
Other questions and comments, council? If none, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative.
Item 27, consider a, a motion to consider approval of agreement for professional engineering services with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for the Norfolk 2019 Bridge Repairs Project for a total fee not to exceed $129,525.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. And Steve, once again, some background on this project, please.
Mayor and council, this is a function of our one and six-year program, where we have $750,000 allocated for bridge maintenance projects throughout the city. There are four, four projects here that we're looking at, or four structures. I'm going to be looking at Exhibit A on the services agreement, and I'll just kind of highlight those. For the First Street over Norfolk of the Elkhorn River, this would be up at the north end of First Street. There are substantial bridge deck repairs that need to be completed, some cracking, some crack injection. One of the bearing pads on that structure is pretty much disintegrated, so we'll be repairing the bridge, bridge pad, some girder repainting, abutment erosion repair. We will not be repairing any guard rail on that structure at this time, or updating any of the guard rail to current design standards. We were going to hold off on that until we do some reconstruction there on First Street in the future. Benjamin Avenue over the north fork of the Elkhorn River, again, concrete bridge deck repairs, abutment repairs, barrier rail repair, new approach guard rail, replacement of the expansion joint, and some repair on the approach slabs. At Elm Avenue, over the old channel of the Norfolk of the Elkhorn, again, substantial concrete bridge deck repairs on that structure, rest, west approach slab repainting, east approach slab mill and overlay, abutment wing wall scour protection improvements, and again, we see no guard rail updates at this time. And then preliminary conversation would be to look at a bridge, full bridge replacement at some time in the future. Currently looking, potentially estimating 2024 for full bridge replacement. The other bridge that would make up the four is the Norfolk Avenue Bridge over, over the levee. Currently, that bridge has an asphalt overlay on it. There's concerns that once we strip that, the deck could be in such condition that it would need a full deck repair. So we were, as a function of this contract, we're going to do some sampling of the deck to see what, what condition it's in, if we think that we can safely peel that off, and we're going to just be faced with some bridge deck repair. We'll probably come back and recommend some bridge deck repair on that. If it looks like, again, once we strip that, that asphalt seal coat off, if we're talking full bridge, bridge deck replacement, we probably will not tackle that at this time.
Thanks, Steve. During the flooding event, water, that last project you talked about, the Norfolk Avenue Bridge over the levee, water was at that bridge. Is there any indication there was any damage or impact on, on the bridge in that event?
No initial, initial kind of bridge inspections following the, following the flood would indicate there's no, no damage or scour.
I was thinking Benjamin Avenue, I'm sorry, I had the wrong.
Benjamin?
Talking about the wrong bridge.
Okay.
But, but none of the bridges that we're talking about tonight were.
No, none of the bridges.
Seen any impact from that.
None of the bridges appear to have any impact or scour. There's some settlement of the, of the riprap underneath those bridges. I would say there's probably a couple feet of settlement. We have a consultant coming in Thursday, Friday this week, that's actually going to be walking the levee, doing a full assessment of any damages in there. They'll be preparing a report back to us, we'll have that Monday. That information will be packaged up and then sent in to the Corps of Engineers as part of a report that goes to them here before the first of May.
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
Those were all in the existing plan already, were they not?
Those bridges were all in the existing plan, correct. They were, they were part of five. The other bridge was over on Coningstein, and we did that repair internally last, last summer.
Okay, so we didn't add anything due to the recent flood?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments, council?
Steve, what is the timeline on this?
Timeline would be late summer, early fall for those, for those repairs. There's a couple in there we'd like to see done before school starts.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative.
Item number 28, would look for a motion to consider approval of emergency repair of Monroe Avenue, south of Love's Truck Stop.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay, motion in second. And again, Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor, council, you may all be aware that we've kind of lost Monroe Avenue, south of Love's, north of Deeds. It's an area that serves a lot of truck traffic back in there. From what I can tell, you know, there was a large section built back there at the same time. We've lost a portion of that. My, my impression from looking at it is, when it was constructed, the, the aggregate probably was coming out of an area of a pit that was more susceptible to the, what we call alkali silica reactivity. That whole stretch from the, I'd say, what I'm going to call the public access, the east access into the Love's Truck Stop, all the way back to the truck access, about 1,650 square yards of concrete is, we've, it's just completely deteriorated. Potholes the size of hula hoops, three, four feet in diameter, going all the way down into the base, curbs completely disinteg, disintegrated. We closed off the north half of that a couple weeks ago. Trucks have been navigating that, the one-way, a shared one-way path. What's before you today is basically an addendum to the Prospect Avenue project. That project bids this Thursday. The several items you see in here, we are estimating at about $300,000 to re, to repair Monroe Avenue, or basically reconstruct Monroe Avenue. You'll see some alternatives in there in terms of geotextiles and so forth. We're right up, I don't know that there's anything out there that I'm necessarily going to want to salvage and put, put back down as, in terms of concrete base or foundation course. So whether or not we're going to have enough foundation locally to do that, kind of still up in the air. So if we don't, we'll kind of back it in with some geotextile, and so $300,000 to go in there and repair that. That was built in 1999, as near as I can tell, 1999, 2000, so we're barely getting, barely getting 20 years on that. Typically, we design concrete streets 40, 50, 60, 70 years. So really substantial loss for us. The reconstruction would be 10-inch dowelled concrete, and about 12 inches, 12, 13 inches of foundation course, very appropriate for the amount of truck traffic that we see going through there. And assuming we've got our hands around the ASR issue, which I think we do, we would see 50, 60, 70 years out of this.
Steve, in your opinion, were there some engineering flaws 20 years ago when this street was put in, and what's, what's contributing to the deterioration?
Part of it, part of it is, is, is construction to minimum design standards, or minimum city standards. Our, our current city code says eight inch, or six inches minimum on, on a compacted clay foundation. I believe what's out there is eight inches of concrete on compacted clay foundation. No dowel baskets, you know, for, for the amount of truck traffic going through there, I would say that's equivalent to, you know, an ethanol plant or grain silos. And 10 inches dowelled, the dowelled across the joints, it's a, it's a one-inch rebar, about 15 inches long, and it crosses the joints. That helps the heavy truck traffic, that load transition from panel to panel. The foundation course, 12 inches, 12, 13 inches of foundation course, that becomes part of the structural component of the surfacing, and helps distribute the loads down into the base. The other piece that fits into there is, you know, even though we, we saw and seal our, our concrete streets, that seal really doesn't last as a seal, it really turns into a plug within a couple years. Moisture gets down into those joints, gets down into that, into our foundation and our subgrade. If we can't get that foundation out, that saturated ground, you lose about 50% of your bearing capacity in saturated ground. So when it's constructed and densified, and, you know, with all that heavy grading equipment, it'll, it'll take the traffic. But once it's wet, once that moisture gets down in there and can't get out, it just starts that deterioration cycle. So a little bit on design standards, you know, whoever was designing it, however that was done 20 years ago, they just missed a few things.
And we, we've adjusted those, so moving forward, we're, we can get more than 20 years out of a concrete street.
We, we have a pavement design engineer looking at that stuff.
Yeah.
Every day.
Okay. Any other questions, Steve, on this? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative.
That concludes this meeting, Norfolk City Council.